I can give you a couple.
to order if you could please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I have roll call, please.
Commissioner Samasko.
President.
Commissioner Baldwin.
Here.
Commissioner Beeden.
Commissioner Torello.
Here.
Commissioner Rushing.
Also here.
Commissioner Van Damme.
Here.
Commissioner Bowman. The reason I got Georgia running the meeting, I had a bad Coney dog today and it's been a struggle today, so.
Want to sit closer to the bathroom, Joe?
Yeah, I'm good.
Okay. Item number four, the deletion.
Yes, at this time, I'd like to make motion to delete item 12-0.
Support.
We have a motion support, any questions or comments?
One question, I had a consent item I wanted taken off, do I do that under changes to agenda or under consent agenda?
So I think we would do it here because we'd be moving J to...
This one, no way, thank you.
No, that would be changes the agenda, we do it now, right, for the second motion?
Yeah, I just wanted to take the item J off for brief discussion, add it to the general agenda.
Okay, did everybody hear that?
No, I'm sorry.
No, I did not.
To Commissioner Samasko, I'd like to remove item J under the consent agenda and place it on the regular agenda as item...
First order business, last order business.
FF.
All right.
Do we have a support? Support. Thank you, any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, so item five, the approval of the agenda as adjusted.
I think there was a motion in second order, right? Or no?
I made the motion.
Thank you, any support?
Support.
Any questions, comments, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, item six, the minutes of the previous meetings.
This time I would move to approve and file the minutes of the 11-223, 11-723 standing committees and the 11-0923 committee commission meeting.
Support. Thank you, I have a motion support, any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, do we have any proclamations this evening? Okay, item eight, the consent agenda.
Madam Chair, can I get, can I make a motion to approve items 8A through 8I on the consent agenda?
Support.
Thank you, I have a motion support, any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, item nine, the reports of standing and special committees, Commissioner Samasko?
Parks and Rec met yesterday, year-end meeting, we did have some discussion about the, I call it the North Channel Park, but there's a different name for it, Water Riverwalk Park, it's moving along nicely, there were some other housekeeping matters with respect to bylaws and some other things, we'll be approving those, I believe, or reviewing those for approval on January 4th, other than that, no more.
Thank you. Sheriff person Baldwin?
So, we actually had a meeting, when was that? Yesterday at the landfill, Steve, myself, Joey, three representatives from CTI, Carrie...
Environmental Health Director.
Environmental Health Director, Health Director, am I missing anybody? We talked about the issues, well, we talked about a bunch of different stuff, we met for like an hour and 45 minutes, but specifically on some of the things that Commissioner Samasko was requesting, that will come up later in the agenda, but what I believe is four out of the five were accepted, the one with the water testing at this time, there was a lot of information that...
I revised that, yeah, there was, I had proposed immediate water testing, but there's information that the state in 2019 did PFAS testing, there's information from home sales, there's information from the Health Department, so I revised that third recommendation to the test of wells after consultation with county departments that would include the analytes believed to be necessary to protect public health, you know, Dr. Remington can talk about it, it was a really good meeting.
Yeah, learned a lot of stuff that I wasn't aware of, so.
So the five things that I made a recommendation, the third one was kind of changed, the other one, the last one, was the landfill cover, that was really a, you call it low priority, it was a deficiency noted in one report at the landfill, it's a closed section, it is a low priority, I picked up on that from another landfill, another area, so I threw that in, and changed that to basically get that done, make it more of a priority just to get that done, that's what I did.
That is my report.
Thank you, Commissioner Torello?
Nelson, at this time, thank you.
Commissioner Rushing?
Just briefly, I attended Riley Township meeting on Tuesday and we had a pretty good crowd there, not quite this big, but for a township was pretty good, and we addressed numerous issues and there was a lot of discussion from the public, so, I go to a lot of my township meetings and I'll be going to the Wales Planning Commission meeting on Monday, if you guys haven't been, please attend your, we represent meetings, because that's what we do here, so, we're gonna have a special meeting in January for Riley, that's all.
Thank you, Commissioner Van Damme?
We had Criminal Justice Association luncheon on Wednesday, discussed moving forward with radio improvements, but we're also gonna put a committee together with law enforcement, EMS, and fire, along with some of our other stakeholders of emergency management and some of our bordering communities, so that they're, everybody's on the same page with encryption, and try and get some county policies put together for both of our dispatch centers, both central and Clay Township, and have them at the table, so everybody's, so we can get in front of this, start getting some policies in before we encrypt anything, so everybody's on the same page, and that'll become, we'll probably have something together for you in about a month or two months by the time we get to everything, we're looking at a lot of what Lapeer County's already done, so we're not gonna reinvent the wheel with this, we want to try and move it through as quick as possible, be due diligent and get it done right, and then we'll just do police right now at first and then fire will file later, because it's a little bigger left.
Right.
And see how, make sure the system works, we have a meeting next month with the state to make sure the system can handle it, so.
Very good, thank you, any questions for any members? Moving on to citizens wishing to address the board, first up, I have Supervisor Rod Yusikowski.
Thank you. Thank you, Board, first of all, I want to say thank you for your efforts on the Sinclair County landfill situation, some of you have contacted me, talked to me, have had correspondence about what the township would like to see, we did have a resolution that we passed and submitted to the county commissioners, the first item on there was that we have someone independent look at the landfill, one of the things that concerned me personally was looking at the landfill violations that Eagle had submitted and the responses, they didn't correlate too well, obviously Eagle was saying that the cause of the failures were design and engineering, and the responses were, no, it's not design and engineering, I think that's why it's important that we have somebody from the outside take a look at that, so that we can get an independent body looking at it, in fact, I would say that tonight you're, I think on the agenda is a contract with CTI, obviously you don't want to switch engineers when you're having a situation, but I think a three-year contract would be a little bit early considering that we haven't decided or discovered what is the actual fault of the issues at the landfill, our second request was air monitoring, I think it's really important that that be done soon, people have been breathing that air for five months and we don't know what is in the air, we can tell that there smells there, but Michigan Department of Health and Human Services is willing to work with us to provide some answers along with the Health Department, to give our community some actionables based on what is in the air, and we still don't know that, Eagle had promised to put something out there, to the best of my knowledge, it hasn't happened yet, I've emailed twice and called Eagle and haven't gotten a response on that, I did apply for, or we're in the process of applying for a grant, totally unrelated to that issue, we need to, we're looking to have the leach aid come off of our sewer system, which is a whole separate issue, but that grant opportunity, I've asked that they include permanent air quality monitoring in that proposal, so that would be something down the line, though, it's not something that's immediate, and we really do need something immediate, along with that, we'd like to see water testing, I did send an email to you, thousand feet with the landfill would be about 65 residents in Kimball, I don't have the parcel information for St. Clair, so I'm not sure what that would be, and then the last thing is, we would like to see the solid waste disposal plan modified, if this happens again, I realize that not having trash delivered to the landfill doesn't resolve the odor issue, but it would help the staff there concentrate on getting the issue resolved instead of still containing or maintaining their normal operations, I do support no Canadian trash and no septic currently, I think until we get those resolved, those things could be revisited, thank you.
Thank you. Christina Nelson?
My name is Christina Nelson and I'm also a trustee for Kimball Township, and just to reiterate some of the same things that he said, we have been discussing things, he's been great about getting feedback from all the citizens, the biggest thing that we're hearing again is the testing for the water and the air, it started off with a thousand feet, it definitely seems to influence those east of the landfill more than the west, but a thousand feet is a good starting place, the other thing is the Canadian trash, it's been an issue in the county for a long time, this isn't something new, one of the comments that was made last week was, even if we stopped all the trash, we wouldn't get rid of the smell, that is not an argument not to take Canadian trash, I think that's an argument to stop, and one of the things that concerned me, I was reading through those five points that Commissioner Samasko had on there, and at the very, right before those five points he had on there, that there was a group that was wanting to have, prefer a third party to do the water testing, what that tells me is that our people who are, should be part of the government, as the government is of the people, for the people, by the people, don't trust the government, and I think taking these steps and stopping the Canadian trash is gonna be a big influence to change how they view the government, because there's been a lot of landfills in the state of Michigan that have sued, and we could try to convince them, don't sue yourselves, but I don't know that they're gonna listen, so I would see this as a huge stepping stone to create a better relationship between the people and the government, thank you.
Thank you. Randy Mathow, Matthew, sorry.
Thank you for having me here, my name's Randy Matthew, I do work for the library system, but my comments tonight have, I do not speak for them in any way, shape, or form. The Sinclair County Library System has a mission statement of connecting you to a world of information, but the limitations placed on the library by the Information Technology Department are censoring what the staff and patrons are able to do, I know the board has heard previously about issues with the VDI system, but I wish to bring other items of interest that may not have been covered before, for example, the library purchased a new microfilm reader and a computer to work the new machine, the policies set on the domain are not letting the new machine work as it should, we had weeks to get it set up, yet the day the installer came to change stuff on the new reader, the entire day was spent trying to get the unit onto the network, I don't know ins and outs of the technology, but I do know that our patrons use microfilm on a regular basis and these machines are across the nation, the machine is working now, but not as it should, when the library millage passed last year, voters turned out to support the future expansion of library services, including the Makerspace, in order for the Makerspace to fully function, we need computers and a strong, robust, compatible network that's much more capable than what VDI can handle, patrons that use our public computers have requested time and again for DVD player options, we've been given a drive to plug in to the USB ports, but it's limited and will not play entertainment DVDs, much less the USB ports on the VDI boxes do not accept many of the older USB drives, and our patrons cannot afford to purchase new ones as they're unlimited in length, different departments within the library have different technology needs, our graphic designer needs the appropriate software to do his job, our digital services librarian is having to use workarounds to do her work, the IT technician staff are great, but they are very frustrated at being so limited as to their ability to fix issues and provide an all-encompassing library experience for the patrons and community, I propose that the board revisit the IT policies and procedures to see where these issues can be solved, I understand the ongoing issues with hackers, but IT should be able to set separate networks for the library versus the other county departments, the needs of our patrons, community, library staff are very different from the other county departments, it's been an ongoing and serious issue that we need to come together to work at, and I know IT is very capable of resolving this given its support.
Thank you. Robert Felix?
Good evening, Commissioners, I'm Robert Felix, I'm a retired engineer, let me start off with a question, I know we don't do those in this part of the board, are any of you on the board engineers? No? Well, being an engineer, I have some good news for you, you don't have to be an engineer to take some positive steps tonight toward controlling the landfill, we have another tool available to us, common sense, let me explain, I've noticed people often act paralyzed when there's not a clear path of action, they tend to freeze and they seek out consultants and experts, it can be difficult to know who to listen to, the experts we have relied on for landfill guidance for years have led us into the valley where we now stand, and it stinks, literally and figuratively, Eagle has issued the landfill four violations to date, and there are hundreds of complaints about landfill odor because of the septic bioreactor, so what do we do? We can and probably will hire more experts and spend more money to fix the landfill bioreactor odor problem, as we must do, to avoid odor issues and Eagle violations, I suggest we start with something we can all do right now, let's use our common sense to step out of our paralysis and address the problem, I believe Commissioner Samasko's measures are put forward in that spirit, we have a fire going at that landfill and that we are producing too much gas, while we work to contain and collect the gas, isn't it common sense to not add more fuel to that fire? I recently communicated with Caroline Parker, a senior environmental engineer at Eagle with 35 years' experience in that position, she confirmed in writing that Eagle, and I'm quoting, "Eagle and the landfill addressed the need to suspend the addition of septic to the landfill," end quote, this means that both sides agreed that this was the right thing to do, as the landfill odor problem still exists, isn't this still a common sense thing to continue to do? I'd like to take a minute to talk about Canadian trash, Commissioner Samasko's motion will direct the landfill to stop accepting Canadian trash effective January 2024, and a Times Herald article on March 29, 2021, Commissioner Bowman stated, referring to Canadian trash, that their food waste works fantastic in that bioreactor, and it does, well, we have all the gas we need now, common sense says, we don't need extra Canadian trash now, also, I understand that the Canadians get a substantial discount over what the trash haulers...
You need to wrap it up, if you could.
...in the county are charged, Matt Williams said landfill has 30 years of capacity with Canadian trash and up to 40 years left without the trash, Commissioners, when our children deal with the landfill in 30 years, as it fills up and is out of capacity, at this point, they'll wish...
Finish it up, please, you get three minutes, so everybody gets three minutes, not four.
I'm appealing to this board for what I've been able to say, to take some common steps, common sense steps tonight, and approve Commissioner Samasko's motion, thank you very much.
Thank you. Carol Miller?
Good evening, everyone, I know Mr. Fletcher's not here, so I'm gonna talk like he is here, if you have not had the opportunity to watch the Chippewa Valley School Board meetings, you may find it interesting to watch public comments from a 14-year-old girl whose name is Amelia, it's unbelievable how some of the board treat her when she speaks up, her First Amendment rights were violated more than once, and the gallery was there to support her each time, she calls out the wrongdoings and unprofessionalism of that board, it seems the same happens here with a few of those sitting before us, with all of the negative issues going on in this county being brought to the forefront, such as not being able to go to meetings where tax money's being used, people voting on conflict of interest items, police issues, children issues, and so much more, it's no wonder what some of the people being called out are trying to wiggle out of their wrongdoings, hoping things are forgotten, but guess what? We are smart and we will not let them be forgotten, Ms. Baldwin, you can go back and watch last week's meeting video, which I'm sure you already told about, most likely already viewed, I will reiterate what I said, you owe no excuses, but a definite sincere apology for your unprofessionalism towards the young woman, Sarah Beebe, who came forward to speak on October 19th, and to all those in attendance and watching live streamed, no excuses, just an apology, you cannot do that, you need to resign, Mr. Fletcher, he took an oath as an attorney with the state of Michigan, he violated his oath, he also violated rules 4.1 as well as 4.4 of the Michigan Rules of Professional Conduct for the State Bar Association of Michigan, he is reportable to the Ethics Committee, in the past week, I have had zero communication from him to state any sort of apology, he will be reported for his poor judgment of behavior and those rule violations, violations of constitutional rights seems to be a theme by some in this county, we in the people of this county will not stand for that behavior, all he had to do was to admit that he openly lied to this board and the people of this county, I have no idea why he did the unspeakable act to support the unprofessionalism of another, as well as said what he did by signifying that I am a liar and I'm a stupid human being, which I am not, I also have no idea why this board supports him and his counsel, as it now is apparent that you are not, he's not always truthful, my parents taught my sisters and me to treat others with kindness and respect and to be truthful, from the way he has acted and continues to act, it's apparent that this was not his case, again, this board needs, this board works for us, we do not work for you, those who remain professional and true to their constituents of their district and of the county need to speak up on the bad acts of the others on this board and get a board that stands for the First Amendment rights of the people of this county and to be kind and respectful of those that take the time and courage to come and speak to you, thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Vicki Blackburn?
Okay, good evening, Commissioners, this is, let's see, please refer to 12-Q on your agenda, we are here to ask you to vote to table any decisions regarding privatizing a contract with the Ottawa Residential Youth Detention Program until after the Juvenile Justice Committee meeting referenced by Mr. McKinnon and due to take place after the New Year 2024, we need at least two weeks to process after that meeting, we acknowledge Tom Hough's accessibility and willingness to answer our endless questions about our juvenile justice system, and he made himself available to give me a tour of the Youth Intervention Center currently used for day treatment night watch, it was time sensitive, very time sensitive, because of the lack of enough notice in advance of this particular Board of Commissioner meeting tonight, we look forward to continued communication, cooperation, and engagement between the Circuit Court, Juvenile Justice, NAACP, and community leaders, however, bullet points are as follows, one, time is needed, two, pass information and grasp from stakeholders and to allow them to read the proposed contract with Otto Coney, two, we still expect advanced notice of the agenda date, time, and location of the Juvenile Justice Committee meeting addressed above, we know this is guaranteed per the Open Meetings Act. I will continue to attend Board of Commissioner meetings to do my due diligence as a citizen, specific attention will continue to be paid to expenditures and justice, four, we learn that there are about 45 youth in day treatment night watch, my research indicates that 100% of these children are from low-income backgrounds, I'll be thrilled, honestly, to find out that's incorrect, however, if it is, if it is correct, why? We know higher-income children get in trouble, do they have resources in the system that our children are not able to access? If yes, why is it okay? Five... used for day treatment night watch. It was time-sensitive, very time-sensitive, because of the lack of enough notice in advance of this particular Board of Commissioner meeting tonight. We look forward to continued communication, cooperation, and engagement between the Circuit Court, Juvenile Justice, NAACP, and community leaders. However, bullet points are as follows. One, time is needed. Two, pass information on the grassroots stakeholders and to allow them to read the proposed contract with Otto Coney. Two, we still expect advance notice of the agenda, date, time, and location of the Juvenile Justice Committee meeting addressed above. We know this is guaranteed per the Open Meetings Act. I will continue to attend Board of Commissioner meetings to do my due diligence as a citizen. Specific attention will continue to be paid to expenditures and justice. Four, we learned that there are about 45 youth in day treatment night watch. My research indicates that 100% of these children are from low-income backgrounds. I'll be thrilled, honestly, to find out that's incorrect. However, if it is, if it is correct, why? We know higher-income children get in trouble. Do they have resources in the system that our children are not able to access? If yes, why is it okay? Five, we have to acknowledge we keep ICE detainees in our county jail. We keep animals in our county shelter. Both are residential, and I'm not comparing here at all. Six, the proposed plan is to create a state-of-the-art animal shelter in the currently vacated building in Michigan by the Geely Intervention Center. Okay? That sounds good.
Need you to wrap it up, please.
Oh, okay, I'm almost done. Let's confirm some space in the Intervention Center for state-of-the-art residential detainment of our youth. We are currently talking about reported two youth in Ottawa and four youth in McComb. Why are we sending money out of county? I'm almost done. Demographics are similar in Ottawa, so why were they able to create and run a residential program and moreover privatize to us? Why is our money going out of county?
Finish it up, please.
Okay. We want to support positive and creative solutions so all of our children remain in the county, going out of county. They will learn.
You gotta finish. Sorry, I gotta finish. Thank you.
I had to fiddle that in because I didn't have notice.
Thank you. Blaine Wilson?
Good evening, honorable members of the Board. I'm Mr. Hefting. I have so much information to convey that I have prepared a letter detailing my experience within the envelopes you all have received. After I spoke to this body on November 2nd, I was hacked in retaliation for speaking out against VDI. At work on my VDI workstation, on my personal laptop while connected to the library's Wi-Fi, and at home where all my computers were accessed. When I brought this suspicious activity on my VDI desktop to the attention of my manager, Dennis Wafer, he said, "Nobody has time to watch others." When I noticed more suspicious activity on my home laptop, I notified the IT team to disable remote access to my user account. However, in the weeks that followed, there were no meetings or discussions about this hack. I would call this a derelict of duty as a hacker with a domain admin's credentials can virtually become anyone on the network accessing their files and emails. In addition to scanning my home network, the IP address of 172.20.20.20 popped up several times. The county has many devices with an IP address of 172.20. One of the computers on the network is a laptop owned by the healthcare company Advantisher, which is a partnership between Blue Cross Blue Shield and the global healthcare company UST. The laptop accesses the EMR systems of 17 small medical offices and the four major Detroit hospitals. The hack may have exposed hundreds of thousands of patients' medical records. Because of the direction of the circumstantial evidence, I am gonna be submitting a FOIA request for all computer and server records for the devices used by network engineer David Krupp and IT Director Tiffany Forner. I only consider them persons of interest at this point, as I've asked myself, who would be angered by me speaking out negatively about VDI, the IT policy of double-sided printing being wasteful, and reactive instead of proactive IT support? I countered that with another question. Who in the county has the skillset, equipment, access, and control of network resources to do something like this? Because of the possible seriousness of this situation, I have contacted detectives at the Roseville Police Department and consulted with an attorney with a technology background. If what I believe is true, I have to consider this hacking an extension of the toxic hostile environment that is within the ICP department. For example, in a November 16 staff meeting, Ms. Forner referred to library technical services manager Angela Klosik as a crazy cat lady. In a library VDI meeting last year, Dennis Wafer referred to some library patrons as homeless people with Obama votes. And David Krupp has a history of harassing and lashing out at coworkers, so much so that I had to file a grievance against him, which still stands two years later. Because of the emotional strain of this situation, I am resigning from my position as network technician. I would like to thank ASB 1089 for their assistance over the last two years, and I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak in front of you. Thank you.
Thank you. Dawn Nowicki?
I'm Dawn Nowicki. First, Commissioner Rushing, I would like to thank you for bringing forth your resolution to make St. Clair County a sanctuary to a county. Thank you. Second, I'd like to thank Commissioner Semasko, Commissioner Baldwin, and Commissioner Torello for showing up at the Kimball Township Town Hall for the communication that took place in regards to what was going on at the landfill. Thank you. What was noticed, Mr. Bohm, is that you were unable to be there. I understand that you were, had plans for a family vacation. Granted, I understand that. The Town Hall was put together on short notice, but there could have been a written statement on your behalf that could have been read. You could have zoomed in for an hour just so that the citizens knew that you cared about what was going on. Our perception is our reality, and you're, what you're showing us is not good for your, for what we're perceiving of you. What, and, oh, the other thing that I would like to thank is Commissioner Semasko, thank you so much for the time and the energy that you've put into investigating what's going on at the landfill and the five steps that you've put forward on here. It's greatly appreciated. So thank you. It will make a difference of, at least to the people, in trusting the government again as to putting a moratorium on the Canadian trash. The people of the Smith Creek community, we've had an issue with the Canadian trash ever since it's been brought in. The garbage that is left along the roads, especially on Smith Creek Road from those trucks coming in, and I understand it's not just the Canadian trash, it's the other trash companies as well, it just seems to compound. And then the odor on top of it, people are extremely frustrated in that area with what we're having to put up with. So if you would vote for the moratorium tonight, it would be greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you. Sheri Schulcraft?
Okay, I'm gonna try to go through my points because clearly, a lot of research here that's gonna take more than three minutes, so I will keep it to three. I'll just try to go through my points as best as I can. So this is regarding the landfill. A, there's still an issue. There was an issue on, twice this last week, and I, I know somebody had said it's mostly east. I live west of the landfill, and it was hideous. Reports were made, but I just wanted you to know it's not just east of the landfill that's an issue. Just to kind of reiterate what some others said, I don't wanna belabor those points, but, you know, the public confidence in, in this, you know, commission. I do also agree that you work for us, we, the people of this county, and that should be kept in mind when going forward. After the last meeting, with that said, after the last meeting when many of us were here about the landfill, we were, you know, happy that you let us all speak first so we could go, but then after, you know, a lot of us reviewed the minutes, we saw that while we're trying to decrease the amount of trash going into the landfill because it's clearly having issues, that three contracts were approved right after we left. Asphalt Trucks, JADC Enterprises, and SA Torello all were approved to bring trash into the landfill, and clearly we're having a huge issue with that landfill right now. I also emulate the thoughts of everyone that has spoken regarding the moratorium on Canada trash. We appreciate that very much, and we, you know, hope that that is going to go through and be approved. Eagle only shows complaints, I know it's been brought up that Eagle is only showing complaints since September. Many of us have been experiencing, experiencing the issues with the landfill and the smell permeating our houses. Long before that, most of the community didn't know who or where to report it to, so that's why Eagle is only shows, you know, complaints as recent as September. As I said, it still smells. Also, like I said, a lot of, there have been a whole group of us that have been researching, like I said, I've got a whole stack of stuff here, and clearly I only have 30 seconds left. Some of the special considerations that I found for bioreactor landfills, which I think is most of us are, that's what we're having an issue with, is the whole bioreactors. We know it's going wrong, and it says increased gas emissions, increased odors, physical instability of waste mass due to increased moisture and density, instability of liner systems, surface seeps, landfill fires. These are all problems that can occur from, and I only have five seconds left, but I'm just gonna paraphrase really quick based on multiple verified off-site nuisance odors from landfill gas. It is apparent that the effective capacity of the gas collection and control system and the RDDP subject portions of the landfill is not currently adequate, and that was something I found on the EPA in one of the violations.
Finish it up, please.
And I'm done. So, thank you for listening to us. Like I said, I know I have a whole stack, but I just wanna say the community, we are researching as well, so we would-
Finish it up, please.
-be getting out of here.
Thank you. Deanna Westfall?
Hi, good evening, Commissioners. I did not prepare a speech or really plan on talking, but I've done so much research over the last couple months that has led me to believe it doesn't matter how much research we do, because a lot of you have been on this Board and you've, in the past, and you've been back on the Board, and at the end of the day, most of you just sign off on everything without questioning it. So I'm really just up here to kind of ask you to start questioning everything on our behalf, because we all get judged the same someday, and I wouldn't wanna be on the right side of history, I guess, if I wanna put it that way. When I look at these operating licenses, you know, they all say they're set to expire in 2024, and we already, I see a renewable operating permit that was just issued October 2nd. So when you look at these dates compared to when we started the complaints and coming into the meetings, there's still things being renewed and, you know, permits being issued that shouldn't be. And my last big question is, how much does it cost to do this? Because from the beginning in 2013, when you guys did the contract with CTI, it was not to exceed $3,000, $3 million. And it ended to $6.5 million. 2018, $10 million, and now 2021, they issued it not to exceed $12.8 million. And, yeah, it's, just seems like a lot of money for something that's not completed yet, something that's failing. And then one more question I have that I wanna bring attention to is the violations, even the inspection dates. There are things that weren't evaluated, and I'm wondering why. Do we have a leachate system? Do the leachate systems connect to all the drains coming out of our landfill? You know, I have just so many questions, and I don't even know who to go to with them, but I would just hope that you guys start to ask these questions because you can. And that's it. If anybody wants copies of any of this stuff, I got lots. Thank you.
Thank you. Libby Prill?
Good evening. Basically, I'm just here, I just wanted to support Steve Semasko and say thank you for all of the research that you did on the landfill. I guess my biggest concern always is the water table. There's five drains that run along the, or connect to the Bell River watershed. And so from that standpoint, I guess I'm worried about that. I'm not too, too far from the landfill, and I have to tell you, I don't have the odor at my house, but if you head up Wadams Road, it goes as far east as Wadams as you come across Smith Creek. It is really appalling, and I, I'm just glad to finally see it get its attention. One of the questions that I have, I know there's been a lot of talk about the bioreactor and the reason for doing that type of landfill, equipping it that way is because it's supposed to help the waste products degrade at a faster rate. So I know Mr. Felix said that the landfill life expectancy is like a 30 to 40 years, so I just wanted to ask you about that. How long do we expect to have use of this landfill? What do we do after that point? So that's one question. So the landfill, and what is, what are we really making off the capturing of the gas? Is this, I mean, is this something that we really want to pursue? I, I know that, you know, there was like $11 million in revenue that someone stated. What is it costing us to deal with the issue? I just kinda wanna a clearer, bigger picture of exactly what's going on down there. Is this the only landfill that we have access to for our waste and refuse? So I have a whole lot of questions. I don't know that much about it. But I do favor Commissioner Semasko's proposal. I definitely, with the Canadian trash, I don't know why we're doing it to begin with. I don't think the $1 million we get versus it taking up 30% of the landfill, I, to me, it doesn't make sense. So, it was that. So the other questions that I have, and I don't have much time left. What are our key targets for grant funding for 2024? I have nothing against the Sun Station power boats, but they got a $350,000 grant from the state. They moved from one township in the county to the next township in the county and got a 50% tax abatement. Is this a revenue loss or gain for the county? I'm not really sure, you know, that I, you know, that this really is advantageous to us, although we don't have any control over where he chooses to, to build. And again, the reason why I'm asking about what are our grant goals for 2024 is because $1.6 billion in grants was given out by the State of Michigan. We got $2 billion, I'm sorry, $2 million for the Pet Project down in Clay Township because-
You need to finish it up.
In the end, that's all about supporting the development of the Down River. While Troy got $900,000 for Cricket Field, I wanna know what we were working on out here that got trumped by Troy. Because $2 million out of $1.6 billion isn't a lot of money.
You need to finish.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Mary Williams?
Mary Williams? Good evening. My name is Mary Williams, and I am an executive board member of the Port Huron NAACP, as well as a very concerned citizen. And my concern is in regards to the Juvenile Detention Center and the borough beds or the beds that our youth from this county will be going, be housed in while they're in the juvenile system. And I know it's very important, I am a retired social worker, and I know it's very important for, that sometimes we have to house our children out of county. But have you guys ever been into any of these facilities? Have you ever, that's important. We need to start going to some of these facilities. I've toured and I've placed children in facilities, and I've been in them. They set up a nice meeting spot for you to come to and for them to give you a whole bunch of information. They have a conference room set up real nice with coffee and cookies in it, and then they tell you how great their facility is. And then they just walk you through a couple of areas in that, in those facilities. But I have been back where the children live. I have been back where they detain children and put them in 10-by-10 little rooms when they're out of order. My feet have stuck to the bottom of the floor when walking in some of these facilities. It smells, it reeks of urine and feces throughout that area. This is where kids are locked up in one room and looking at TV and playing games in the next room outside. Just because a child could not get their behavior together, they lock them into these rooms. Also, I have been in facilities where, see, as a social worker, I make unexpected visits to the facilities to make sure that our children are being treated right and safe. When I walk into the, when I have walked into these facilities, there were spots of urine all on the floor. These are children, this particular facility housed children who are disabled, children who are delinquents and disabled or hard-to-manage children. Feces and urine on the floor, clothing not hung up properly. This concerns me when we had, when we're taking these children and placing them- placing them out of county. Normally, it's our low-income children, or it's our children who have learning disabilities, or just disabilities, or children who don't have families, such as the family that I provide for my children. These are children without a voice. And I think as county commissioners, if you're gonna place children out of county, go check out some of these facilities and go beyond the little greeting room that they have set for you. Thank you. I hope you really think about placing our children out of county when we have facilities that we can put our kids in here-
You need to finish.
If we provide the right amount of money for people to work in those facilities. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to resume the meeting at this time. And we have no unfinished business, so we'll move on to item 12A under new business, approval of county dispersments.
Motion.
At this time, I move to approve county dispersments for the month of October 2023 in the amount of $42,134,897.40.
Second.
Have a motion support? Any questions or comments? May I have a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Baldwin?
Yes.
Commissioner Trello?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Vandabash?
Yes.
Commissioner Semasko?
Yes.
Commissioner Chairperson Ball?
Yes. I would just make the comment that these items, if it seems like we go through it fairly quick, these items were previously in front of us at our last board meeting, and then they get passed on to the full board meeting, so.
Thank you. Item B, the Resolution 23-33?
This time, I would move to adopt Resolution 23-33, adopting the 2024 Special Revenue Fund budget and amending the 2023 general and special revenue fund budgets as presented.
Support.
Thank you. Have a motion and support? Any questions?
Just one. It had to do with the resolution we passed at our committee meeting for final action. Does that have a number yet? Because I looked for it on our website, and it was not there yet. So, this one, of course, is 23-33 for the Sanctuary County. Do we have a number on that yet?
Um, do you know Angie? Angie's okay. No, I will follow up with staff tomorrow to get that on there.
We don't have to sign that at a meeting, right? You can say anybody, do you have to sign those at meetings, or can you just sign them anywhere?
We try to get them signed at meetings, just because you're here, but you can, if we need the signature, someone can stop in the office.
Thank you.
And we did have a roll call on the one I'm talking about, so that's on record, that it was a roll call vote anyway, so we do have that. I just thought I'd ask it, because we got numbers on all these, so.
Okay. So, you don't have any specific-
Nothing on this.
Okay. And then it, we'll handle it. Okay, perfect. Okay, we have a motion support? No further questions? May I have a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Trello?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Vandabash?
Yes.
Commissioner Semasko?
Yes.
Commissioner Baldwin?
Yes.
Commissioner Chairperson Ball?
Yes.
Thank you. Item C?
This time, I move to approve the boards and commissions' reappointments as presented.
Support. I have a motion support. Any questions or comments on these?
The, Carrie, one question for Carrie. The parks appointments are gonna be done January 4th. They're not on, are they?
Uh, no, we, the park appointments are not on here. There's been some interest expressed and potentially some of the vacancies, so we wanted to allow individuals to get applications in.
Thank you.
And we will have more conversation on the parks.
That's fine. I just, I don't recall what was on it, so I wanted to make sure that was-
But the change-up of that, we'll come to a committee meeting first. You've talked about it on the parks level.
Oh, the bylaws?
Yes.
That's gone for final action January 4th.
Okay. But that, but that talks about the membership?
It was at the committee meeting last, you know, we talked about it last week. It deals with, bylaws deal with their procedure and process. But what's your question?
So, I, actually happened-
Oh, the appointments?
Yeah, the-
Yeah, we can't do the appointments till we get the bylaws in place. There were some changes made. One person resigned, and there's another spot that's renewed, so.
Okay.
And there's some evidently interest coming in, so.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. We have a motion support. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 12D, Resolution 2337?
At this point, this time, I would move to adopt Resolution 23-27, establishing salaries for specific county elected and non-elected county officials for 2024.
Support.
Have a motion support? Any questions or comments? So, the resolution itself has 23-27. The agenda says 37. That looks like it's 27 on the, yeah, on the actual resolution.
Yes, it should be 27, and the next one, 28.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Have a motion support? Any other questions or comments? May I have a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Vandabash?
Yes.
Commissioner Semasko?
Yes.
Commissioner Baldwin?
Yes.
Commissioner Trello?
Yes.
Commissioner Chairperson Ball?
Yes.
Thank you. Item E for Resolution 2328.
Madam Chair, can I make a motion to adopt Resolution 2328 for approving the annual wage adjustments for county association of non-employment, non-union employees? The canoe.
Support. Have a motion and support. Any questions or comments? May I have a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Vandabash?
Yes.
Commissioner Semasko?
Yes.
Commissioner Baldwin?
Yes.
Commissioner Trello?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Chairperson Ball?
Yes.
Thank you. Item F, Resolution 2331?
At this time, I'd like to make a motion to support the adoption, the adoption of the Resolution 2331, establishing compensation to be paid to members to Sinclair County vote commission.
Support.
Thank you. Have a motion support? Any other questions or comments? May I have a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Semasko?
Yes.
Commissioner Baldwin?
Yes.
Commissioner Trello?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Vandabash?
Yes.
Commissioner Chairperson Ball?
Yes.
Thank you. Item G. Commissioner Semasko, you're up.
Yes, thank you. I'll just say that there's been a lot of interest, obviously, in the landfill. And not only from the community, but from this board, from administration, from our director of the land, our manager at the landfill, the engineers. Everyone's interested in this. I made my motion last week, because I did do quite a bit of work trying to figure out, if I don't know something, I know I don't know it. I find out as best I can. And I've learned a lot. And I've shared it with the other commissioners, and we've talked a lot. We've had meetings. So, on this particular motion, it came up, I put those five out there. They're really common sense things, as Mr. Felix said. So, I think if there's consensus on the five in the form that I most recently sent to the board this afternoon, after adjustments from the meetings we had and so forth, I could move just basically all at once for adoption if there's consensus. Otherwise, I did have it broken down by, you know, by various motions. So, if there's some, I'd prefer pass them all at once, but what do you have?
Yeah, I mean, Joey was in that meeting too. And I mean, our landfill people, I think we all came out of there with a good understanding of everything. I didn't see any pushback or-
Well, is there any objection from any of the commissioners from passing them all, from voting all at once? Okay, see, now, that's how, that's how I will couch it. And all I'll say is, they're, they're common sense. The first one is the municipal trash. I looked at the four contracts we have. Three are expired. One expires in March, so we're obligated under contract to take a little bit until March. So, but we'll put that in place. It won't come back until the action by the board that would justify accepting it if we ever decide to do so. Same thing with the injection of the septic. There's no contract issue there. It's not inter-county waste, so we can, we don't have to take it. That's easy. You know, we'll do that. The third one is having initiate, having administration initiate measures with the Sinclair County to provide quantitative testing for drinking water from wells in proximity to the landfill after consultation with appropriate county departments that would include analytes for the components believed to be necessary to protect public health. I said it rather quickly. But what that does, basically, is what I learned from the meeting, there were three engineers, two administrators from the environmental health and our public health, our administrator, three commissioners, our landfill manager. And we went for two hours. And you guys know how I ask questions. And I, they answered every question I had, and I was pretty much myself, you know, I enjoyed the meeting. It was interesting. But I learned a lot. And scientists view things differently than public officials vested with public health concerns. And they have information we don't have. And our health department has information that we need to have. So, on that, the water testing part, I think that'll take care of it. There's an interest to do it. This shows a commitment that we wanna do it. When you collect water for testing beyond bacteria and E. coli, it has to be in a certain kind of container. It has to be refrigerated. It has to, all these other things. So, there's a lot to it, then just say, go out and do it. And then, there's information from the PFAS testing from the state from 2019. They did a broad range of trying to get people involved with that, because the state had an interest in PFAS, which is a different component of landfill materials, but also affects leachate and landfill gas. So, it's very complicated. But I'm proud of the board that we're gonna do these things, so that's why the third one was done the way it was. The steps for ambient air quality, our administrator and our landfill manager had talked about that for some time. I just pushed it a bit, and they were in agreement, and they already had things in place. We've got the equipment, I think Matt, well, maybe he'll talk later, I don't know, but there's equipment that's already purchased for testing of various analytes and landfill gas components that we now own, that we're gonna have a program for that. So, that's actually been underway, and it's taken care of. The last one is a piece with the compliance for final cover. That was something that I noticed in some litigation on other landfill. That was noted in this litigation. I asked about that. He said, yeah, we do have one spot that needs something. So, they're gonna make that more of a priority. That's more of a housekeeping deal, but it needs to be done, so we don't have a deficiency. But on that, you know, I'm, I think it's gonna really show that we do care. We're doing everything we can. And we're kinda learning as we go through it, you know, as best we can too. So, I appreciate the township officials coming in. We have two here tonight. I've spoken to them a lot. You know, everybody seems to be on board with, with putting public health first. And our board chair, he set up that meeting. That was a great job. I hate meetings. I hate meetings with a lot of people. You know, I'm telling you, you know, you sit around and you talk, and nothing happens. So, but a lot's, a lot's happening. So, at this time, I would make the motion as submitted to the commission that I produced in writing, the five points dated final action, December 14th, 2023, that I've synopsized here tonight. If I have a second, we can go down.
Support.
No, I would just like to say, I mean, we're aware of the issues that are, you know, happening there, unfortunately. I think we got the other flare installed out there. They're doing some other gas extraction. We've spent-
They're doing some kind of a trench that's gonna draw the heavy gas out. I mean, they're doing a lot of different things.
I think we've spent over $400,000 so far out there. I know administration has discretionary spend in emergency situations. What I didn't wanna get into is something creeps up, and then we gotta come before us in 30 days, that type of stuff. So, you know, we definitely wanna fix the problem.
I also think the steps that we take in a formal manner will help avert enforcement action, because that's the next thing. Regulators are hard to figure out. Sometimes they, they do things that they don't really need to do. We're doing everything we can. I wanna show them, the public, we're doing everything we can, and show the state, we're doing everything we can. So.
Yeah, and I, you know, I've been here 20 years, and we haven't had any problems, you know, previous. And Rob's been out there a long time. And then, you know, until recently. And so, yeah, we gotta fix it.
And I, I have some real concerns with Eagle and their lack of response to Supervisor Yuzakowski or anyone else reaching out. I mean, they sat through that three and a half hour public meeting, that people were able to just share everything that they were experiencing. So, I don't know if there's something that we can do, whether through administrative, administration. I know that we had talked about it with some of our legislators. So, I mean, even if it's just something sent from all of us, or if we all send something, but to maybe lean on Eagle a little bit to do the air monitoring. I understand that they can't force them, but they can, when we discussed it at the legislative lunch, they seemed-
I think we need to circle back around.
I do, too.
We need a friendly reminder tomorrow, and I'll get ahold of Dan Lowers and some others.
Yes. I think that was, I think that was, okay, I'm good. Yes?
Yeah. Some of the residents spoke earlier, and the townships, trustees were here, so I appreciate that. I appreciate everybody. I think this board has taken action as best we could and as fast as we could. And somebody said they don't believe we're engineers. Well, one of us is. But there's some common sense, and they brought that up also. And I think these are very common sense things that we can do to address this. And I think we'll address other things as needed and get it back up to where landfill doesn't have any odors and they're in complete compliance. So, I think this is common sense stuff to do.
And Liz King, the Health Department Director, did email earlier and said she wasn't able to present tonight, but felt confident that based on your meeting, that her viewpoint is included within this as well, that the Health Department's on board. Any other questions or comments? Okay, we have a motion support?
We have a motion. Dave seconded, I think, did he?
Yep.
Somebody, I didn't mean to motion somebody second.
I seconded.
Yeah. May I have a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Baldwin?
Yes.
Commissioner Trello?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Vandabash?
Yes.
Commissioner Semasko?
Yes.
Commissioner Chairperson Ball?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay. Item H, the Commission on Aging Appointment?
At this time, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Bonnie DiNardo to the Commission on Aging, representing a member-at-large for the remainder of the three-year term expiring December 31st of 24.
Support.
Thank you.
Motion support? Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item I, Commission on Aging?
This time, I would move to approve our senior services contracts as presented for the 2024, 2025.
Support.
Thank you. Have a motion support? Any questions or comments? Roll call?
Commissioner Trello?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Vandabash?
Yes.
Commissioner Semasko?
Yes.
Commissioner Baldwin?
Yes.
Commissioner Chairperson Ball?
Yes.
Thank you. Item J, fiscal year 2024 CMH Grant?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the letter of agreement with the Sinclair County Mental Health for Recovery Court Services for a term of 10/1, 23 through 9/30, 24, in the amount of $23,300.
Support.
Thank you. Have a motion and a support. Any questions or comments on this? May I have a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Vandabash?
Yes.
Commissioner Semasko?
Yes.
Commissioner Baldwin?
Yes.
Commissioner Trello?
Yes.
Commissioner Chairperson Ball?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries. Item K, Sheriff Contract for Port Huron Charter Township?
This time, I move to approve the agreement for law enforcement services with the Charter Township report here, and for a term of 10/1, 24 through 12/31, 26, in the amount of $2,922,468.
Support.
Have a motion and support? Any questions or comments?
Just comments, and I mentioned that to Dave. The variety of townships that we have, and you being a previous supervisor at Fort Grasshead, and I went to the township meeting in Riley, their entire budget is $400,000. I believe Lynn Township is just over $200,000. They've got $3 million just to spend on protection. So, depending where you live in the county, there's a big variance of what each township can afford and not afford.
Yes. I think, and some of them do it through a millage or a special assessment as well.
Who seconded that? Who seconded that?
Vandabash.
Me.
Vandabash.
Yeah.
Dave did.
Okay.
Sure.
Any other questions or comments? May I have a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Vandabash?
Yes.
Commissioner Smasco?
Yes.
Commissioner Baldwin?
Yes.
Commissioner Trello?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Chairperson.
Yes.
Thank you. Item L?
Yes, at this time, I'd like to make a motion to approve the agreement for law enforcement services with Charter Township of China for the term of January 1 of 24 through December 31st of 26, in the amount of $614,382.
Support.
Thank you. You have a motion support. Any questions or comments? May I have a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Smasco?
Yes.
Commissioner Baldwin?
Yes.
Commissioner Trello?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Vandabash?
Yes.
Commissioner Chairperson.
Yes.
Thank you. Item N, the Contract Approval Request for Animal Control.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the agreement with NOR for the, to conduct a feasibility study to repurpose the day treatment night watch building for animal control in the amount of $28,320.
Support.
Thank you. Have a motion support. Are there any questions or comments? Okay. Well, may I have a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Baldwin?
Yes.
Commissioner Trello?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Vandabash?
Yes.
Commissioner Smasco?
Yes.
Commissioner Chairperson.
Yes.
Thank you. Item carries. Item number, or item N?
At this time, I'd like to make a motion to approve the letter of agreement with Sacred Heart Rehabilitation Center for Residential Substance Abuse Treatment Services for the term of October 1 of 23 through September 30th of 24, in the amount of $10,000.
Support.
Thank you. Have a motion and support. Any questions or comments on this? Wish we had more facilities and more money to put in.
Mm-hmm.
Seeing none, may I have a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Trello?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Vandabash?
Yes.
Commissioner Smasco?
Yes.
Commissioner Baldwin?
Yes.
Commissioner Chairperson.
Yes.
Thank you. Item O?
That's been deleted.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't cross it off on this side. Item P?
This time, I move to approve the letter of agreement with Region 10 Prepaid Inpatient Health Plan for Residential Substance Abuse Treatment Services for the Intervention Center for a term of 10/1, 23 through 9/30, 24, in the amount of $130,000.
Thank you.
Support.
I have a motion support. Any questions or comments on this? May I have a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Vandabash?
Yes.
Commissioner Smasco?
Yes.
Commissioner Baldwin?
Yes.
Commissioner Trello?
Yes.
Commissioner Chairperson.
Yes.
Thank you. Item Q?
Yes, at this time, I'd like to make a motion to approve the agreement with Ottawa County Juvenile Detention Center Bed Rental for the term of October 1 of 23 through September 30th of 26.
Support.
Okay, have a motion support. Any question? Yes.
So I was here when the Intervention Center first opened, and they had the one, call it the wing or the pod, that was for the juveniles. At the time, there, for some reason, the numbers had went down over time. It got to the point where it wasn't even cost-effective for us to treat our, our youth. So we contracted out with Macomb County. We're limited to Macomb County to, not a lot of beds, right? So the Ottawa County gives us the ability to, to do that. I mean, it was, it just, I wouldn't call it business, but the way that that whole system and Stevie worked, and it just completely changed as far as numbers, juveniles. I don't know if there's alternative sentencing, so on and so forth, but it doesn't support, you know...
The tools, the tools available to the probate judge that does the juvenile part, there are several tools, one of which is incarceration, you know, lock him up in the juvenile detention center. I think that's not something the courts like to see happen unless, quote, necessary. So maybe, I don't know what the reason is, but I think that was part of, as you write, we didn't have the enough numbers to support our own facility. And I'm curious, Ms. Williams talked about, you know, these facilities that are squalor, basically, in the back room. I, you know, I'm going to try to find a way to look into some of that, but my impression was that the courts, that's the responsibility of the court, you know, to put them, place them in places that are decent, you know. We certainly can look at that. But I will mention it to Judge Brown the next time I see him, and I know he'll be interested in what occurred here tonight. So, but yeah, we, we place them there. We've placed them out of state. When I was, I was the juvenile director in Santa La, we placed them in Nebraska for peace safety. Why, I don't know, but that was all we had available, and that's where some of them went, you know. So it's, it's part of it is supply and demand and, and the philosophy of the courts, I guess.
We also had, back in the, issues when we did shut it down, is staffing issues. We had major staffing issues in the juvenile center, keeping it full of staff. It's a tough, it's a very tough, hard job to do, and pay rates weren't great for the staff in there. I mean, it's, and what they were allowed to do to protect themselves is, we had a lot of staff assaulted inside the juvenile center at the time. As we've had, as an adult custodial, we had to go in and assist at times.
Like a risk man, risk management component.
Dave worked in that facility.
Yeah. I worked on the adult side. And we, every once in a while, I had to go in and help them out. And what they can do and what we can do handling adults is totally different.
And I think we, we absolutely have a need, you know, when I talk to Mr. McMillan, there is, there is a need for this. So I do think that it's, it's time sensitive, but I also don't feel like this is a, a long-term solution. So I would hope that we maybe would treat it as a short-term solution for an immediate problem right now. I do like that there's a 30-day out, so as long as, you know, written submission by us, we can get out in 30 days. So the length of the contract isn't as concerning. But the more I speak with people from CMH and the courts, it's, I think, something that we're probably going to have to address. But if this bridges a gap for a little while, I think, I don't know what else to provide the tools to the courts.
Isn't that a pay-as-you-go deal? That's a pay-as-you-go, right? I mean, like a hotel, you put them in, you pay.
That's correct.
And it's just an extra capacity if we, we want to send them over there. Let's say there's a conflict or something, or family on that side of the state, maybe there's a reason to send them. It gives us some, gives the courts some flexibility.
And Sheriff King is working on proposals for us down the road and checking on feasibility, what we, you know, where we're going to be at numbers-wise for, you know, because he's, there's a whole group working on that right now. So we're going to hear more about it in the future, so.
So this is just a...
Bandaid over bullet hole.
Um, do we have an approximate count of juveniles that are being sent? Total count, because the reason we went to Macomb is because the cost didn't allow us to continue, or it wasn't a good, so we, the counts down, what do we currently have?
So actually, Mr. Hall is here, and he can address your questions.
Great.
Good afternoon, Board. Thomas Hall, Director of Juvenile Services through the 31st Circuit Court. So hopefully, I can answer any questions that you have. I will clarify, obviously, our contract with Ottawa County, what we utilize Ottawa County for is residential treatment beds. So that's the biggest issue. If you're familiar with any of the residential crisis, the detention bed crisis, we know that Wayne County Juvenile Detention Facility was overcrowded. They had such an amount of kids because of the treatment modalities just aren't there. So that's the biggest thing that we're looking for, is, is to be able to utilize their residential treatment program, what they call their RISE program. So we transport kids out there. They typically do anywhere from 90 to 120 days within that treatment facility, and then they return back to their homes. So it's a very short-term intervention. They're doing parenting groups out there to kind of keep the family unit cohesive. We do home visits, so we're transporting back and forth from Ottawa County to get them back into the home, just to see how things go. There's a lot of issues and a lot of changes within the juvenile justice system. If you're not familiar, Lieutenant Governor Gilchrist just signed a full juvenile justice reform package on Tuesday, which opens up a lot of different opportunities. One of the big things, I'm sure Mr. McMillan has talked about, is the 75% reimbursement for childcare fund. And that opens up a lot of opportunities for us to utilize community-based services, such as our day treatment program, and expand so that we're offering more interventions in the community. We're keeping kids at home. We're keeping them in their families. We're working with them. Unfortunately, there is an element of out-of-home placement that we do have to kind of understand as a, as a necessity. We've got kids in the community that are committing significant criminal behaviors and victimizing people. At some point, it's unsafe for the community to be able to manage these kids at home. We have to look at a residential treatment to address them, such as, you know, Nebraska. You've got Boys Town in Nebraska. You've got other residential programs that, you know, we do utilize, you know. And this contract with Ottawa is nothing new. This is probably the, the second or third kind of contract term that we've utilized them, just as an option. I think current number for Ottawa County right now is I have two kids there. So in, in a grand scheme, I think out-of-home placements are probably encompassing maybe, maybe the top 4% or 5% of what we have for adjudicated youth. It's, it's a very small number of kids that we're trying to seek out-of-home placement. We're trying to kind of heal the families, work with them in the community, and make sure that we're making the efforts there.
Just approximate number, what are we sending up to Ottawa?
Ottawa County, I think annually, probably under 10.
Okay, so, okay.
It's, it's a very small number. Like I said, I think currently, I have, I have two youth right there.
Do you have any, do you have any response to what Ms. Williams said about the condition of these? Can you spread light on that? Is that true or partially true?
I would say that, and I've been in some facilities. I know Wayne County JDF, the detention center down in Wayne County, that has significant issues due to overcrowding. They're understaffed, and that's what we're seeing statewide, is that these, these detention centers, these residential treatment programs, they're understaffed.
Does our county have a person like yourself that might look into that from time to time?
Absolutely.
Is that, is that you, or who does that?
I would, I would be willing to do, you know, the majority of the work, because like I said, I want to make sure that the kids that we are sending to these, these facilities, they're safe. I don't want kids to be more victimized than they're already coming into the system with.
I guess do the judges really know? I mean, they're going to want a nice place. They're going to want a decent place.
Sure.
I mean, what, is there a system in place? I'm sure they're licensed, state licensed and all that. Do you know how that goes? Nursing homes can have squalor, too, you know. So do we have anything in place, or do you think we need something in place to periodically randomly spot check or do any of that, or?
I, I think your state licensing system, so what we've seen is there was a death of a youth in Lakeside Academy, and that's just outside of Grand Rapids. I think since that happened several years ago, you've seen an increase in the, you know, the effectiveness of maybe them to, to ensure that facilities are safe for kids. You've seen a lot of residential schools close because they couldn't manage that safely. Star Albion was one. Wolverine secured the facility just outside of Vassar was another one. So you've had a lot of these facilities closed because they were determined to be unsafe.
Are these, are these inspected by, like MDOC when they come in and inspect the county jails? Because once a year, we're inspected by MDOC does it. So make sure we're following state protocol and...
Absolutely. It's the, it's the CCI, so it's the Childcaring Institute. They oversee all of the licensing for these, these locked-down residential facilities.
Is, is that the Office Inspector General? Because like with nursing homes, if someone files a complaint, they investigate. I know the state has a process. I'm a little bit more familiar with nursing homes, but I'm assuming any licensed facility like that would be subject to a complaint process and an inspection process, that the state would get involved as well as the interest we might have.
Absolutely. It's just like a, like a, like a childcaring institute. So it could be like a, like a daycare. Daycares are subjected to kind of the same, you know, concerns with complaints and investigations. These facilities kind of fall under that same envelope.
What made you choose Ottawa? Or what, what part of, how's that, what is that relationship?
Sure. So Ottawa County, we work collaboratively with their family court. So I mean, there is a relationship amongst kind of the professionals. We all sit on the Michigan Association of Family Court Administrators, along with the other, probably 82 counties in the state. So Ottawa County is one that is able to facilitate a residential program within their detention center. So that's one of the big things, is it's, it's an option, and it's, it's what's available. Because what we know is there's such a crisis. You know, there's a lot of liability that comes on with this. There's a lot of staffing. I know one of the commissioners mentioned Macomb County. We still use Macomb County as our detention center for contracted beds. Historically, it was 140-bed facility. They can only staff 30 beds right now. So you're seeing this statewide, as you, you have a deficit of staff that want to navigate this field because it's very difficult work. I mean, you're dealing with kids in crisis, and you have to continue to be compassionate and work to, to find that level of treatment that's going to be effective. It's, it's difficult.
Does that fall under the childcare fund for payment, or is that more of a county expense?
So it does fall under childcare fund, but it's a 50-50 reimbursement. So any out-of-home placements is a 50-50 reimbursement. It's not subject, that's 75-25.
Okay. Are there any other questions or comments? May I have a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Vandabash?
Yes.
Commissioner Smasco?
Yes.
Commissioner Baldwin?
Yes.
Commissioner Trello?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Chairperson.
Yes.
Thank you. Item R, Waden Enterprises LLC?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve Addendum F of the lease agreement with Waden Enterprises, extending the expiration date from 2/12/31/28 in the amount of $282,989.19.
Support.
You have a motion and support. Any questions or comments? May I have a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Smasco?
Yes.
Commissioner Baldwin?
Yes.
Commissioner Trello?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Vandabash?
Yes.
Commissioner Chairperson.
Yes.
Thank you. Item S, Resolution 2337?
Yes, at this time, I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution 2337, adopting the St. Clair County Master Plan.
Support.
You have a motion and support. Any questions or comments? Kudos to the Metro Planning for putting that together. It's not a small document, and it wasn't a small undertaking. So it's a, it's a good, good document. No other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Resolution 2336, item T?
We just did 37? Okay. Yeah, at this time, I would move to adopt Resolution 23-36, pledging full faith and credit for the Kerrigan and Grace Drain District Drain Bonds.
Support.
Okay. Have a motion support. Any questions or comments?
Pretty standard stuff.
Yes, I'd like our drain commissioner to move on from District 2 for a little while. Other areas...
We could use him down in District 7 badly.
It's all, it's all good work. It's all necessary. Okay, have a motion support.
Badly.
Pass that on.
Tony. Badly.
Any other questions or comments? May I have a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Baldwin?
Yes.
Commissioner Trello?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Vandabash?
Yes.
Commissioner Smasco?
Yes.
Commissioner Chairperson.
Yes.
Okay, and I'm sorry, I didn't do a roll call vote for the resolution for Master Plan. Do we need to, is that okay? Okay, thanks. Sorry about that. Item U, Contract Approval Request?
This time, I move to approve the contract with Pierce and Pitt Trucking Incorporated for not to exceed the amount of $28,500 for the term of 12/1, 23 through 11/30, 24.
Support.
You have a motion and support. Any questions?
I guess I got a comment, and I just, Joey, maybe you can clarify this. I know they talked about you guys hauling trash to the landfill. You're not in the trash hauling business, correct? Don't you have stone contracts?
Well, we do, but...
Convolutions.
We do, but the contracts that were on the agendas were not for trash. It was to bring materials in.
Materials, yes.
Like the roadways and...
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Mr. Williams is here, if anybody has any questions. Okay. I have a motion in support. May I have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Trello?
Yes.
Mr. Rushing?
Yes.
Mr. Vandabash? Mr. Semasko?
Yes.
Mr. Baldwin?
Yes.
Mr. Chairperson Ball?
Yes.
Thank you. Item V?
This time, I move to approve the contract for landfill cleaning services with Sanitize IT LLC for a term of 12/15/23 through 12/31/24 in the amount of $13,850.
Support. We have a motion in support. Any questions or comments? May I have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Rushing?
Yes.
Mr. Vandabash?
Yes.
Mr. Semasko?
Yes.
Mr. Baldwin?
Yes.
Mr. Trello?
Yes.
Mr. Chairperson Ball?
Yes.
Thank you. Item W?
This time, I move to approve the agreement for equalization aerial imagery with Eagle View and Walpert for a six-year term in the amount of $322,455.
Do I have a support?
Support.
Thank you. Motion in support. Any questions or comments?
Just one. Have they already started on this?
No, no, they haven't, not until you approve it.
Okay, because there was a plane flying over my hundred and sixty acres, and that thing was just barely moving. I'm saying, what the heck is he doing? And I thought maybe it was this guy.
Can, can I also ask another question? When, do we know when we did it the last time?
Um, I believe it has been approximately five years. It's been a bit.
Better pixels, better everything. If you look at, you know, every time they do it, the quality is way better.
It's an amazing resource for municipalities throughout the county. I, I use it a lot. It just, it's got a lot of great data, a lot of imagery, so, but I think you're right on the five years. And then, and then certain communities, they can choose to buy up to have a more pixelated, you know, better picture, higher...
Well, I...
Resolution.
Thank you.
The premium, the premium package.
I've flown airplanes, and as slow as that guy was going, that's tough to do. Whoever was flying, you know, he was barely moving.
I can't answer that, but, um, okay, we have a motion in support? Okay. Any other questions? May I have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Vandabash?
Yes.
Mr. Semasko?
Yes.
Mr. Baldwin?
Yes.
Mr. Trello?
No.
Mr. Rushing?
Yes.
Mr. Chairperson Ball?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries. Item X?
This time, I move to approve the purchase of Cisco's Secure Email Solution in the amount of $71,280.
Second.
Any questions or comments or... May I have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Semasko?
Yes.
Mr. Baldwin?
Yes.
Mr. Trello?
Yes.
Mr. Rushing?
Yes.
Mr. Vandabash?
Yes.
Mr. Chairperson Ball?
Yes.
Thank you. Item Y?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the revisions to the Health Department Manning Table, adding a Assistant Director of Nursing and a Planning, Planning, Promotion and Evaluation Director position effective for 2024. Support.
Thank you. We have a motion in support. Any questions or comments? May I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Baldwin?
Yes.
Mr. Trello?
Yes.
Mr. Rushing?
Yes.
Mr. Vandabash?
Yes.
Mr. Semasko?
Yes.
Mr. Chairperson Ball?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries. Item Z?
This time, I would move to approve the agreement for IT Services with Oakland County for a five-year term as presented.
Support.
We have a motion in support. Are there any questions or comments on this? May I have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Trello?
Yes.
Mr. Rushing?
Yes.
Mr. Vandabash?
Yes.
Mr. Semasko?
Yes.
Mr. Baldwin?
Yes.
Mr. Chairperson Ball?
Yes.
Thank you. Item carries. Item AA?
At this time, I'd like to make a motion to approve the 2024 Board of Commissioners meeting schedule.
Support.
Okay, we have a motion in support. Any questions or comments? Any? Anything stand out? All those in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Motion carries. Item BB?
This time, I move to approve the architectural service provided by William Vogon for Judge Armstrong's courtroom renovations in the amount of $16,915.25.
Support.
Where'd you go?
Where'd you, that was DD.
That was DD.
Oh, DD, I got my hearing agent too.
Boy, boy. Sorry. Well, we, can we, do we just do DD right now? Okay, motion in support. So, any questions or comments on Vogon contract?
On DD.
On DD. Okay, no?
No.
All right. May I have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Rushing?
Yes.
Mr. Vandabash?
Yes.
Mr. Semasko?
Yes.
Mr. Baldwin?
Yes.
Mr. Trello?
Yes.
Mr. Chairperson Ball?
Yes.
I did come up quick. Okay, now back to item BB.
I got that one.
Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the agreement with LSI Business Development, Inc., for ARPA Consulting for a term of 12/15/23 to 12/14/26 in the amount not to exceed $100,000. Second.
We have a motion in support. Are there any questions or comments?
So how's the fund? Are we paying for this? Our...
So I know there had been different, different discussions on how to fund it. Our recommendation from the administration is that we take this hundred thousand from our ARPA funds. We are allowed to use it for administration. I think if we required the individual municipalities to pay for it, it's going to be a lot more difficult, and we don't want people to not work with the consultants. So we felt this was the easiest, cleanest way.
I like that approach.
I do, too.
Agreed. There are still so many questions.
Absolutely.
It's running down, so.
It's a bit complicated, to say the least.
Right. And when they, so will this be on an as-needed, you know, when we get a project, or will we?
So, yes, Deana and I actually have a kickoff meeting scheduled with them next week, assuming the board approves the contract this evening, and then we will work through process with them, you know, but certainly, we still want to have the projects come to us, you know, we'll filter them to the consultants. Any follow-up, the consultants will work with either the municipality, the organization, whoever it may be, to get all those follow-up questions on the project. They'll do the research, make sure it qualifies, and then assist them with all the required paperwork and documentation.
Are we going to have a formal policy on that process? In other words, requiring review by this consultant, or is that a, just, how do you, how do you handle that?
Um, so when the projects come to us, we are going to require that the individuals, you know, work with the consultant, just because, you know, our current staff doesn't have the time to be able to manage this many projects in addition to ours.
We're going to get review on every project submitted by this consultant.
Yes, that's correct, unless, you know, there's still small bits of money that commissioners have from their districts that were coming out of the lost revenue portion. Those don't really need to go to the consultant because there's a lot less restrictions, so we can likely process those.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? May I have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Vandabash?
Yes.
Mr. Semasko?
Yes.
Mr. Baldwin?
Yes.
Mr. Trello?
Yes.
Mr. Rushing?
Yes.
Mr. Chairperson Ball?
Yes.
Thank you. Item CC?
This time, I move to approve the District Seven ARPA project for $5,760 for the purchase of a fire hose, and $8,857.92 to purchase radios, radio equipment, and accessories for both the Marine City Area Fire Authority.
Support. We have a motion in support. Any questions or comments or anything? May I have a roll, yes, may I have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Semasko?
Yes.
Mr. Baldwin?
Yes.
Mr. Trello?
Yes.
Mr. Rushing?
Yes.
Mr. Vandabash?
Yes.
Mr. Chairperson Ball?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries. Item EE?
At this time, I'd like to make a motion to approve the proposal and award the administration's, administration's security camera installation project to DA Central in an amount not to exceed $36,823.
Support.
Thank you. Any questions or comments on the contract? May I have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Baldwin?
Yes.
Mr. Trello?
Yes.
Mr. Rushing?
Yes.
Mr. Vandabash?
Yes.
Mr. Semasko?
Yes.
Mr. Chairperson Ball?
Yes.
Thank you. Item FF, which was considered item J.
Yeah, there's probably not a motion out there in anyone's packet, so I would make the motion for the CTI contract renewal.
I'll second his motion, but I want to talk about...
Right. Okay, so we have a motion in support. Now, do you have some questions?
Question for Kerry. Kerry, you know, I looked at the contract, as part of this deep dive into the, into trash in the last month, I looked at the contracts from CTI going back quite a few years.
Speaking of the mic, I can't...
You know, the deep dive into the landfill I did on some of these issues, I looked at all the contracts, you know, the initial contract, addendum A, addendum B, addendum C, addendum D. Now, the not to exceed sixteen million, I've also looked at the billings they did for last year. We pay them maybe a little over one point, well, about 1.1 million a year. Why does that, why does that say sixteen, not to exceed sixteen million on a three-year contract when we pay them a million?
So it's because we're doing an addendum to, so every time we do an addendum to a contract, so it just keeps compounding from their initial one in lieu of doing a brand-new contract.
Because when someone mentioned that, I thought to myself, it looked like, well, what are we doing, paying twelve million dollars a year? I got it.
No, we're not paying that much annually.
Well, I knew that, because I looked at the receipts and all that, so I, but the question is, so, you know, and I had, probably would not have seen this on the consent agenda, but with the fact that I was looking at landfill stuff, and I says, okay, CTI's got something, but look at it. Well, that's under our policy 121, category 100? I think, well...
Your, your contract policy, I don't know the number.
Under contract renewals, right?
Yes.
Okay, not to, this has stumped the administrator by having me looking at it.
It did, though.
So it says, you know, total renewed contract amount does not exceed Consumer Price Index, I get that. It can be placed on consent agenda, says that. Now, you know, you look at these contracts, every one we passed here tonight, even on the main agenda, was nowhere near what CTI gets. The ones on the consent agenda were 119,000, 2,000, 15,000, 32,000. So I was kind of startled by this. It fits the policy, and I talked to some other people about this. The thing that caught my attention was the CTI contract, first of all, was on the consent agenda. It's essentially a million-dollar contract. This is not in the consent agenda, and the language of the policy says it's for things that are routine and, you know, smaller in nature. I'm going to at some point talk to perhaps the administration and some of the commissioners about revising that policy, but something like this should not be on a consent agenda, to me. It should, it fits the policy, I get that, but then in addition to that, you know, so it's a large amount, then it's eight percent, three percent, three percent. That's fifteen, fourteen percent. What's this fourteen percent of a million, David?
Eighty thousand dollars.
It's eight percent of...
And thirty thousand and thirty thousand.
All right, so, you know, it's a lot of money. So my thing was, I wanted to have it taken off, and I have some things, some ideas on how to save some money on a contract like that, if there's any interest. I mean, if it's just going to, you know, if people want to move it on, but I don't see, I mean, we're, we're partners with that company. They're going to want to maintain services. It's a timing issue with the landfill problems. You know, I would, I suggested, if I had, if someone agrees with it, maybe a ninety-day, you know, continuing resolution or continuation of an extension, get a little handle on landfill and, or at least, I'd like to, I'd like to have our administrator talk to the vendor about, you know, do we really have to give you eight, three, and three, because employees get three? I think our highest award in fact-finding or something was five. You know, can we knock it down a bit? I just, I think that's too high, so the consent agenda bothered me. They're a great company, don't get me wrong. I mean, at this point, I have no reason to believe that we don't have confidence in our, our, those people, because they run our landfill. That'll be a question for another day, perhaps, but that's not what this is about. It's about the consent agenda, million-dollar contracts, eight percent raises, employees get three percent, and that kind of thing. So I, I would suggest we... See, we can't, in the next two weeks, because it expires in December.
So you spend a lot of time, as you do on all these contracts, with the vendors, talking, negotiating, and I know Kerry is tight with the cash, as we all know, right? So when you start looking at all these contract approvals, it's somewhat question, you know, the micromanagement piece of this. There's a board...
On a million-dollar contract?
Telling, telling, I mean, obviously we've got the information, but we're telling administration, you know, I, I think we have administration, we have purchasing, we have multiple levels before it even hits us. It's not like I'm an individual that's just coming out and recommending this. I just...
I don't know, eight percent on a million dollars is just to me...
So I think they were two and a half the previous three years, if I wasn't mistaken.
Approximately around there, correct.
Yeah.
And if I'm, you know, that, that's the part I don't see. So if they were underpaid, and this is some kind of a thing, but just my, when I look at it from 10,000 feet, it just popped out at me. I think we should take a pause on it, maybe explain it further.
One thing, too, to talk about scope of services, so when I first got on the board, the bioreactor was just happening, right? We didn't have a leachate treatment facility. We didn't have a gas-to-energy project. We spent 14 million, 15 million dollars on those types of things. The amount of work, the amount of compliance, the amount of other things that are necessary for them to do is a completely different animal than back in '04 when I got on this board. So sometimes you can, you know, you question those types of things, so.
We paid them for the engineering, for whatever we do out there. They're our, they're our engineer. You know, it just seems that, I, I would think we could negotiate a better contract with them, and we had the lawyers from the prosecutor's office, and they're professionals, because I talked to some people from CTI just generally about it, you know, while we're professionals and where our rate is really high, we're giving you a cut rate. There's a lot of things they pitch for that, but the bottom line is, it's eight percent, we pay our employees three percent. Nobody in this room gets a CPI raise. I don't get it, I don't, anyone else gets it, you know, so it just bothered me. If I'm the only one, so be it. On the policy thing, I think we need to look at that policy, because I think, just like the other contracts on our main agenda, they were 100,000, 300,000, it's just, you know, here we have a million-dollar contract on a consent agenda. That's not good. I don't like that. If no one else sees that as an issue, I'll move on, but at this point, I would like to look at that policy so that not to, you know, so the contract's CPI is fine, is a trigger, but at least have an amount, so anything over 200,000 or anything over something, you know, so we at least look at it, because I don't know if I've missed other ones or whatever. So, and then the eight percent was the other issue, so.
I could ask Kerry, was the contract negotiated at all, or was it just offered at eight percent, three percent, three percent?
No, it was negotiated down quite a bit from their initial proposal.
Do you have a ballpark figure, what they, were they trying to get 15%?
I did not personally do the negotiations, so I, I certainly can get you that information, though. You know, we can get that information, revisit the policy, you know, whatever the board would like to do.
Well, what would happen if we didn't approve this till we get some answers till next month?
So this current contract expires December 31st, so they would be under no obligation to do any work for us on January 1. You know, certainly I can reach out to the vendor to see if there's a willingness for further discussions.
Of course, we're not meeting again.
Not until January 4th.
Unless there's a special meeting on the 25th of December.
Are you busy?
Probably.
Not after nine AM.
I mean, we could extend the contract. We could make a motion to, reach out to the vendor, extend the contract 30 days, look at it, but if there's no, if, if you vetted it and it's negotiated and people are comfortable with it, my issues, the eight percent, I would not support that, and then the policy on these things ending up on a consent agenda when they shouldn't, in my opinion. That's, but that's, that other part is for a different day, so.
Only thing, an addendum makes sense on a consent agenda, but I agree with the threshold, right? Because if it's something, if it's an addendum, then in theory, we've already looked at it, so I do, I can see why it would be on a consent agenda, but if you want to put some kind of threshold that, you know, I mean, if it, if it's an expenditure over some kind of threshold that, you know, I mean, if it, if it's an expenditure over 5,000, it has to come, or 10,000, right? It has to come to us. So I think, I agree with you.
What number do you like? I mean, just shooting from the hip here, what do you think?
Oh, what's the contract?
What number? I mean, I don't know what number is right. Is it 10,000? Is it 50,000? Is it 100,000? I mean, I just know a million dollars is the other side of where I'm comfortable.
Well, no one can spend any money over 10 without it coming here, so that, I mean, those policies don't.
And the board does have an option to, you know, like you did this evening, take anything off the consent agenda, but we can certainly come back to you with a recommendation on perhaps a threshold for consent agenda, if that's something you're more comfortable with, okay?
If it's not in the consent agenda, would there be more information? And I still see it on the agenda, so that if we moved it from.
You would get this, the same amount of information, it would be presented in the same way, it would just show up on a different section on your agenda.
But was it on?
Well, but you would see, it would be on committee as well.
It was on committee, so I didn't, I missed it at committee.
No, consent items do not go on committee, so that is the difference. If it's a regular action item, it would be on committee for discussion.
That's another reason.
So it wouldn't look any different on this agenda tonight?
No, but.
But it would look on the committee.
If it was on the committee agenda and I didn't see it, that's one thing, that's on me.
It was not on committee.
And I just only saw it because of the length of stuff I was working on, so it drew my attention.
Yeah, no, that may, I agree with you on that. So I don't know if we need to take any action, but I do think that right now, it seems very timely to make sure that things are moving in the right direction, so is a 30, I mean...
We got a motion a second on the floor, so I guess we vote on that, right?
Well, we could, we could move to amend the motion in some method, or you as the mover could say, you know, do you think we need to look at that? If people aren't comfortable.
I'm comfortable with administration's recommendation, that's why we pay them, and that's the way we get a building full of people sitting in here to, you know, to bring recommendations forward, so.
Okay, so we, well, if they're, yes, sir.
Potentially, because this is 140,000 increase over a million, if you use that just because it's compounded, so it's a little more than that over three years, 140,000. I'm concerned that, thinking about the monies involved, is it potential that we're going to have to raise tipping fees to cover this contract?
No, I would not foresee this contract causing an increase in tipping fees. Another thing to note is this is a not-to-exceed amount, so we are billed, it's not a flat amount. And all of our contracts do have an out clause in them, so even if the board did agree to this, and at some point you wanted to make a change, we do have out clauses built in to all of our agreements.
We are up against a deadline on the contract, that's, that's an issue, but.
Right. I would be, so if there's a good out clause, I would be concerned if all of these other steps we're taking at the landfill, if it is found that maybe we need to move on to a different engineer for whatever reason, I'm not claiming we will, we don't know. Today, we don't know what that looks like, does it make sense to enter into a three-year agreement today because of what's happening, or if, but if we have a sufficient out clause, then I think that's okay.
Well, if this is approved tonight, and they fail in the next three to six months, whatever we're doing, we're looking out there, and we find that they're failing at what they're doing, then we can use the out clause. So we could go about business as usual. I am concerned about the $140,000 and also potential raising the tipping fees, and we did that once before when Matt here, and we recommended, I believe it was $6, and I recommended at the time $12, so we wouldn't have to address it again, and then within two years, we had to address it again and kicked it up to $12. We should have done that, but everybody's got hindsight, so that's easy to say. We can, and same thing here, if we approve this tonight and find out, you know, they are failing, well, maybe we should have done others, but we can get out of it if we do approve it tonight.
So we've had a 20-year relationship with these guys, they've done us a good job. I know we've had issues as of late, but to say these guys are a crap engineering firm, they do a lot of the work for Department of Defense. We've actually used our patent, the DOD actually came out to look at our bioreactor, because there's a big thing with Air Force bases wanting to be off the grid and as an alternative for, for energy, you know, so they do have us sitting at the table, and a lot of these, and I know a lot of you guys haven't been in those meetings, I have, right? So, and that's a kind of, you know, that's where the, I think the bioreactors, whatever, I mean.
Nobody's, I don't think anybody's really taken on CTI. I don't want to give the impression that I'm making some comment on the value of CTI, it's really more just the amount, you know, maybe Carrie can shed some light on it. When we negotiate with, like, say, unions here, and arms-length, you know, been here a long time, and we say 10%, or 3%, or 5%, okay, but then vendors, do we, is there a good reason to treat vendors differently than our own employees?
Well, when, you know, the employee's wages isn't the only thing that goes into the cost. We have increased costs for our pension, for our post-employment liabilities, sometimes healthcare, even though we've had excellent experience rates with our healthcare, so there is a lot more that goes into employee costs.
So when you give them 3, it's going to work out to be a lot, maybe more than 3, is what you're saying.
Well, as you can see from the two sheriff contracts that were on here, those were actually 8% increases, and we don't, there's no profit in those, we charge back our costs, and that has to do with.
And those were negotiated through collective bargaining.
And that, yeah, that has to do with the increased benefit costs associated with payroll as well. You know, I can say, with the high CPIU, we have had a lot of vendor contracts come through, you know, certainly some at the sheriff's office, you know, our commissary, our food service, our medical, our here-on. We're seeing vendors, all of them are asking for these very large increases, and we are negotiating them down to as much as possible before we bring them to you. You know, however, whatever the board wants to do with this, I'm certainly happy to reach out to the vendor and further negotiations if the board would like, if you want to approve a shorter agreement, whatever the board's comfortable with.
There's a motion, a second is not modified, so.
One last thing, I did meet with the chief engineer and ask him about his agenda, asked him where from Germany he is from, and he says, what do you mean? I'm not from Germany. And of course, he's from India, so just a little humor there, but.
Bad imitation, Dave.
I think you were there also, Jeff.
Stick to karaoke, Dave.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? Okay, may I have a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Trello?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Vandemosh?
Yes.
Commissioner Samasko?
No.
Commissioner Baldwin?
Yes.
Commissioner Chairperson Bo?
Yes.
Thank you. Item, oh, number 13. The administrators report.
I believe, you know, the landfill meeting's been covered, certainly, a lot of the work that administration's been working on this past month has been landfill-related. Last week, we did have the opportunity to meet with Midwest Strategies out at our airport to discuss some of our projects, some of our challenges with our tree clearing and our crosswind runway, so we were able to get them on board and see if we can maybe get some assistance with Eagle in some of those areas. Last week, we got a first draft from the architects for the health department facility. They reviewed with health department staff. Based on feedback, they'll be making some revisions just to make sure the location, the workflow for the office is, works for the department, and we're hoping to have some budget estimates by February. They're thinking they'll turn those revisions around fairly quickly. Commissioner Samasko already mentioned the park bylaws. I know that's something this board has discussed numerous times over the years, so those proposed changes were presented to the park board last evening, and it is the intention to bring those to this board in January committee, potentially for final action, along with the park board reappointments. So there are some vacancies and some seats that expire the end of this year, however, there's been some interest in individuals that have wanted to apply, so if the board is able to take final action on January 4th on those reappointments, it would not affect any of the park board meetings, because that would take place before the next park board meeting. Any questions on the bylaws, some of the changes we're looking at? It brings us more in line with some of our other advisory boards we have, you know, library, veterans, planning, so it streamlines it a little bit, and it'll make it, I believe, more efficient for our park director as well.
Can I ask a question? So when I was looking at some of it, it looks like, so District 1 and 2, our districts are combined with a representative.
Yes.
District 3.
Has their own.
Has, is it simply population-based? Because when I look at other areas of the county, I'm thinking, there are more county parks outside of the city of Port Huron, but the city of Port Huron, not even the whole city of Port Huron, because I have the first three, has one whole person.
Some of them I don't necessarily think are commissioner districts. If you look at our road commission, for example, we have three commissioners, but they cover multiple areas.
I can tell you what the statute said.
That five district map that several of the boards follow, that was drawn before my time here at the county, so that's what has been followed. I don't know where that came from or who decided the history on that.
I can, I can comment on that. First thing I did is I looked at the statute, and the statute talks about the board of commissioners setting rules for parks, and it's very clear, it's in the statute. The other thing is the composition of the park board, it's an advisory board, there are four required statutory members, road commissioner, drain commissioner, planning, we have someone in planning, and one commissioner. It was Howard Heidman when I was here last, it used to be, I think, McConnell, maybe, or Duke Dunn, I forget, but now I'm on there as the commissioner. The other ones, the statute says, maybe essentially, as we, as we decide, up to three more, up to two more county commissioners can be on the board, or however we see fit, you know, there's some provisions for that. So we have, there's, you know, there's seven districts, and there's three of those split up, so they gave, you know, two, two, and one, so it's just doing the math, and Port Huron, for whatever reason, I didn't really see a problem with that, I just, that's just, I think, it was just a math thing, right? 1 and 2, 3 gets 1, 3 and 4, 5 and 6, whatever the hell they, I got my math wrong, but that's how they figured it out. But what I wanted to say is this, I went to the park board, the park board, I've been around a long time. I came on here in 2007, I was elected, and there were different park boards, different philosophies, different park managers, you know, park versus PRC, park versus the commission, and we went through a number of things, different attitudes and things. Well, the park board that I've experienced in the last year, those people work really, really hard. They have the alternates, which we deleted, and it seemed to cause, people seemed to take, some took, I don't want to say offense at that, but they were hurt by the fact that we wouldn't have alternates. Well, that's something, it was an anomaly to the boards, and it was something that, you know, administration wanted to look at. I think our park manager, you know, didn't care for it, whatever. So there was that issue, but then some of the people on the committees, because they had a number of standing committees that no longer meet, they weren't germane, they were just kind of, it needed to be, looked at. So I know that our park manager expressed to those folks, and one was Jim Beer, who's worked, he does the finance piece of it, he's the finance committee, he does a phenomenal job. He's looking at stuff for the millage, I mean, he looks at stuff up one side, down the other. The amount of time he puts in, I'm very impressed with, and I thanked him for that, you know, I said, nothing really has to change, but they kind of felt that maybe the board was brushing him aside, or diminishing their contribution, and it really wasn't that. So I'm working on making sure we get that message out, that we totally value the, Sharon Hagerty, who's been there for 25 years, Jim Beer, who's been there for many, many years, his dad was there before him, all the hard work they do, but I'm kind of a procedure guy, too, and it's a little bit not procedurally correct, under Robert's Rules, how they run some stuff, so I said I'd like to see that corrected, too. So I think overall, it puts our director, who we have, a younger park manager, you know, Dennis Delor, I think he's doing a good job, I've talked to Carrie, I think Carrie was the one that brought him on, a good selection, I think, he's got the right attitude, the right people skills, all that, so I think it's going to really enhance park, and I just want to reach out to the people on park board, including the citizens that show up, and some of the alternates, that we can, we can make this work really good for everybody, so that's my hope, so.
Yeah, I think my concern still is, I think that the city of Port Huron, who I want to say has over 20 parks of their own within their city that they manage with their own parks board, having one full representative feels unbalanced to me.
Well, I asked our park manager, I said, because I looked at that, I says, any other way to carve this up? Is there any other entity in the county, any other person we need at the table? And we could, I couldn't really, I usually think these things out. I couldn't think, well, do we need somebody from someplace in the sheriff's department, you know, one of the legislators, representatives, somebody to plug in? I don't know, you know?
Right. I was thinking just citizens. I mean, who are your users of our county park facilities? Probably come from more outside of the city centers, who have their own parks, programs.
Yeah, I don't know. I don't, yeah, I don't know how it seems to work. I mean, they'd certainly need a voice, but how do you, you can't give them less than one. Give you half a commissioner, and now half of them. So I don't know what the answer is to that, but I didn't really do much with it, I just figured, maybe we'll work on that.
Thanks.
And then just one last item, the opioid committee met, I believe it was in November, and during that, we started a smaller subcommittee, so we are working with Region 10 to coordinate some of the suggestions that came from the Community Services Coordinating Body Committee, as well as the Health Department's Community Health Improvement Plan. So we are kind of, what we're tackling right now is the lack of treatment options that are in county, so those that are seeking treatment do need to leave the county for that. I know we approved that contract this evening with Sacred Heart, so we're seeing if some of our dollars could be leveraged to bring some of those treatment resources in county. That's all I have this evening, unless there's questions.
I just wanted to let the board know, we are dealing with some IT issues throughout the county, especially in emergency services and in the judicial area, and Carrie's been working, some of the department heads have reached out, and we're working with them right now. We do have a few bugs in the system right now, and hopefully IT picks up their game.